All right, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15th order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place due to the outbreak of the coronavirus, this meeting of the town of Berlin Select Board will be conducted by a remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. The town of Berlin will use best efforts to post an audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's webpage, the town's YouTube channel, and approval minutes will be posted to mytowngovernment.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend the virtual meeting may attend via Zoom webinar platform in one of two ways, with both audio and video access or by telephone audio only. Should any board member have technical difficulties and/or lose access to the meeting, the meeting will recess for a period of time to see whether access can be restored. If not, the meeting will be continued to another date agreed to by a majority of the board or adjourned until our next scheduled meeting. All right, we'll call the meeting to order at what clock can I see, 7:03? So we have approval of the November 2nd open session meeting minutes. Do I hear motion?
So moved.
10 seconded.
Okay, any comments or questions?
Nope.
Okay, we'll take a vote. Keith, I.
Stone eye.
Hawkins eye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Under correspondence, Margaret, you were going to address a Board of Health letter that we received.
Yeah, the board received a letter on Friday from the Board of Health regarding the 1870 Town Hall Septic System, and it goes into a bit of a history on the septic system for that building, which happens to be shared with the dwelling at 16 Woodward Ave. So the Board of Health informs the board that there is no existing septic system permit for the system, and because of that, there is no existing design flow on record. And so I know we had talked about this at prior meetings. I should have just read the letter, I'm sorry. An engineer must assess the existing septic tank and leaching pit to determine its design capacity based on the code in place at the time of installation. Once a design capacity is determined for the leaching pit, the flow from the adjacent dwelling at 16 Woodward Ave must be subtracted from the total design flow to determine what design flow is available for the 1870 building. The file indicates that the leaching pit is shared by the 1870 building at 12 Woodward Ave and the dwelling at 16 Woodward Ave. It appears each structure has its own septic tank, but shares the leaching pit, which is located on First Parish Church property at 16 Central Street. This creates a shared system as defined by Title V, Section 15.290. And then they go on to say the shared system is addressed in letters dated in May of '04, July of '05, and April of '08 from Attorney Francis Burke. And because a shared system involves three individually owned parcels, it would need to be brought into compliance prior to change of ownership in any of the three parcels. So that is correspondence that was received last week. I'll continue to follow up for more information on that.
But we've continued, we are making no change to the use of the building, thus do not need to do anything related to septic system.
Frankly, the building is not really being actively used right now, except for small groups and sporadically, so.
Right, but even if COVID evaporated tomorrow, we're not talking about a change in the use of the building.
Not at this point.
Right.
Right.
It just means if we were to make a change to the use of the building, like, for example, adding a commercial kitchen, there could be potentially a significant costs and other improvements that are necessary.
Right. Okay. I thought under correspondence, I would at least give a thank you to the town clerk, Eloise Salz, and Assistant Town Clerk James Wheeler, and all those who assisted with the November 3rd election. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Appreciate all your hard work. General public comment. Got anything, June?
Before we bring on the one and only Mr. Smith, do we want to talk about the email from Bob Blair that he sent you, Margaret, you, Chris, you, Scott, about the Veterans' Day event? He sent it to 10 this afternoon.
That explains why I'm not ready yet.
Yes, so.
He did give you a voicemail, so I might.
Yes. So the voicemail, yeah, so the voicemail is for you to, you know, potentially read name Scott. Chris said that you'd be able to do it. I can't unfortunately, I have a doctor's appointment that afternoon.
Say what time, because I actually work.
Well, I know.
And Wednesdays are usually my day at the office in Lexington. It makes it even harder for me just to skip out for a little bit to do it.
1:00 PM on Wednesday.
Yeah, no, I have a, I have a meeting I have to be at. I'd love to do it, I think it's a great thing to do.
Yeah, same.
I think he was also inviting Margaret and Mary.
Yes.
I would love to do it, I'm gonna be here and I'm gonna be in attendance anyway, so if he'd like me to read, I'm happy to.
All right, and if anybody sees Mr. Wheeler, Mr. James Wheeler, could you ask him if he would like to do the trumpeting, playing of taps? I guess Bob's reached out to him a couple times, hasn't been able to get into touch with him. And Mr. Ager is going to ring the bell after the reading of each name.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, I'll write back to Bob and copy you all and say unfortunately Scott and I are out, but Mary and Margaret are more than happy to jump into our spots. Mary's shaking her head. Mary, you shaking your head?
My kids don't have school, so I'll be home.
Okay, so, all right, Margaret, it's up to you, don't let us down, no pressure.
Not yet.
Not yet.
All right. Won't let you down.
You haven't let us down.
I certainly won't let our veterans down.
There you go, okay, awesome, all right, thank you all.
Okay, then we're gonna bring our Highway Facilities Director on, Dave.
Good evening.
Hi, Dave.
Hi, Dave.
How was everyone?
Good.
Good, good.
It's Monday.
It is definitely a Monday.
Oh, Scott had a rough day.
After having a week of Tuesdays, you know, maybe a Monday was pretty good, so.
Sorry to hear that. So I for one am glad the month of October is over. It was a very trying month for our department.
Did anybody have earthquake on the 2020 bingo card? Just asking, okay.
I lost. What else can come at us, right?
Ah, no, 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 no.
Anyway, we made it through the month, we were shorthanded most of the month with the vacant positions. We were able to fill one position at the end of the month, which helped us with the snowstorm that we got. So that was, that was a little bit of a help that we was having one, one of those positions filled. We had that pretty good windstorm, which surprisingly brought down no dead trees. All the trees that came down and took the power lines down were all healthy, leafed out trees, so.
Only because they had leaves on them, right?
Yeah.
They were heavier than.
Yeah, and the wind came from a direction in that storm, so it took down trees that, you know, normally probably wouldn't come down, but there was some big oak trees that came down on Randall, mostly, a lot of the damage was on Randall, I'm not sure, maybe it was the elevation, but you would have thought that Sawyer Hill, but there was only a couple that came down on the pasture on Sawyer Hill, so it didn't really affect any traffic or wires. The roof of the chicken shack got blown off, so we had to go up and tack that back on.
Which one is that?
That's the fine looking structure that's at South Commons.
Okay.
So after the storm, we spent probably the better part of a week tying up loose ends and picking up branches and things that we didn't do the night of the storm. Which, once again, that was challenging because there were only three of us. So, but we got it done. Line striping was done townwide, so the center lines and the fog lines were done. We didn't do that last year, we kind of redirected the funds last year for line striping to tree removal. So that was, there was a couple of residents who were kind of complaining a little bit about that, but we'll get after it. We helped with the winterization of the community guidance, so that's with the new well system, that's all been blown out and all set for winter, and hopefully we don't have any issues when we fire it back up next spring. Sad to announce that Aiden probably only has another, I think he's down to 38 hours now, so he's only got a few more days with us, and then we're gonna have to turn him loose. Yeah, it's, I've actually, I've been, I've been trying to get him placed in another DPW locally, so hopefully we can hand him off to somebody with a good feeling, know that he was trained very well, so that's one good thing that comes out of it. We have another senior workoff employee that's gonna be doing some cleanup and maintenance work around our building and other buildings around town. Taylor Road, do we want to talk about Taylor Road?
Sure.
Just drive quickly right by it.
Where you left it with signs, correct?
We put up signs warning that the road is not being maintained and you're to use it at your own risk.
Good.
I think we should pursue the next level of making that road so that it's a non-maintained public way, so that the town isn't liable for any damage incurred by anybody. It's just my thought.
And what would that entail?
So I think, I haven't read all the paperwork on it, but it has to go before the board and it has to be voted on. It's still a town road, it's just not maintained.
Right.
And one good thing about that, not only is it the fact that we don't have to maintain it, should a developer come in at some point in time, which is probably gonna happen at some point, the developer is now responsible for bringing the road up to specifications. So.
Okay.
We need to look at that. Other than that, I don't have a lot to report, it's business as usual.
You've done two hires in October, right? One just started in October, the other one's starting soon?
The other one started last week, last Monday. So we're at full staff again.
Nice.
And we also took on, starting today, we have an intern with us.
Do we dare talk about Richard Drive?
Yes, I was trying to find the name, just to make sure I was saying it correctly.
So I had a survey crew out there two weeks ago. They sent a drawing, which Mr. Cowell doesn't feel is acceptable, I guess, so he wants a site meeting with, I think he wants the board there as well, and myself, and the survey company, and I'm not sure what's gonna come of it.
Is that, you recommend that, Margaret?
I think that I spoke with Curtis today, I think it's probably a good first step. So you probably all saw the emails back and forth, this is just another issue that goes back decades, and it's, it's not as easy as it might have appeared initially to put the pieces together. We're talking two different subdivisions in two different decades, and there were covenants and easements and transfers, and what we need to do is sort it all out so that we can better understand who has responsibility for Richard's Drive, whether, you know, whether there was a closure of documentation between the subdivisions and things like that. But I think a site visit is probably, I would feel that it was, it would be a good first step.
I mean, I know it's not an accepted road by the town.
Correct. Richard's Drive is not, right?
But if it's not, if it was just someone's driveway, would we approach this any differently?
No, because we'd be looking at doing all work within the town.
Right, and, and that, because I've been up there a couple times now looking at it, it, obviously, there's nothing the Board of Selectmen or Dave could do to stop water from running downhill. And I believe that one of the reasons why it, let's, let's say, for the sake of argument, it looks ugly, is because there's that sort of large backstop, for lack of a better term, that backstop helps channel more water down the drain than would if that backstop was gone. It was if it was just a relatively level drain, more water would run down that driveway than is doing it now. And so I just, I keep trying to, when I go, every time I go up there, it's like, okay, if really money wasn't much of an object, which money is an object and time is an object as well, what is a solution there? Because if there's, if there's that much water going down, I don't know if the, then I don't know what could possibly have stopped it from going in that driveway.
Interestingly enough, the subdivision plan from 1961 actually shows a drainage system fully within the subdivision, and it's unclear as to whether or not that has been totally disconnected. So there were, there were two catch basins inside of Richard's Drive that then crossed Richard's Drive to a swale or a drainage area. And, you know, I guess, I guess my question is, if that was still in place, wouldn't that also be helping? So these, that's a question I can't answer at the moment, I don't know if it's in place, and so, anyway, trying to, just trying to help.
I'll go back, because I'd like to know, like, what is the outcome we would like, knowing that water still flows downhill? I can't stop that, I mean, I, I see it on Sorry Hill, not Sorry, Summer Road, when I walk, there's a couple places where just water goes where water goes, and there's not much we could stop it from doing without some major changing of the topology of land, which is not easy to do. And not, and the topology of that land wasn't changed by adding a drainage there.
No.
Okay.
So if you.
That might be my only rant for the night.
Given time. So if you need, if you need a board member, I'd be happy to go, just let me know.
Okay.
Dave, before you go, could you do me a favor, and there's absolutely no rush, when Jim came up and chopped up the tree that went across Lyman, he dropped a big, large part of the branch, and we tried to move it this weekend, I can't pick it up, and I don't have a chain, so I'm not allowed to have a chainsaw for fear that I would cut my leg off. So if you're in the area, well, it's the truth, if you're in the area, could you just like third it, and then we can huck it in it, in the back, but I just can't pick it up? And I tried to roll it, but it's got a branch sticking out of it, and I figured I would cause an accident down the road, so.
Nope, take care of it tomorrow.
Awesome, no rush, honestly, whenever you guys are in the area, I don't care, it's sitting all by itself.
Okay, any other questions for Dave?
Appreciate all you do, and thanks for coming up, sending Jim up to take care of that that night, that was really sweet, appreciate it.
Problem.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and nice night.
Have a good evening.
Thanks.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the Town Administrator Report.
Okay, the first item is not on my printed report, but the Recreation Committee currently does not have a quorum, and so it cannot sign invoices. Julie Lee, the Chair of the Recreation Committee, has sent an invoice for Cully Septic for $200. These are the portable restrooms that are at the South Commons. She has confirmed that the town has received services for this invoice, and I need to ask the board to sign, I don't know if June's in the audience, I don't know if she'll allow the board to authorize me to sign, or if she'll look for the board's minutes, but one way or another, we need board approval for signature on this invoice.
And it was, it said something in the email about it not being, they're waiting on the porta potty invoice.
It's, it's here.
It's so, I just wondered if it was something different to do with the, with Cully's.
I am waiting for the portable invoices to come in. This is the only one that I've received, I don't know what other invoices she's looking for, but this is the only one that I have.
Okay.
Is that for the, the event that was down there, the musical event?
Yeah, maybe, maybe they're hauling them away now or something.
Maybe, maybe they are, I don't think this is just for the event now, this is probably for the, at least the prior month or quarter.
Yeah, because it's dated 9/3, so, right before Labor Day.
Summer.
Yeah.
I can get clarification.
Or maybe they, maybe that was when they brought them. I don't know, I don't remember when that senior thing was.
It was on a Tuesday, I thought, I don't remember.
It was in September, right?
I thought so.
I know, it's 2020.
It was after.
October was six months ago.
Yeah, the event, that musical event was after this, so I don't think it was.
But we just, I don't think there was any porta potties down there until that event. Maybe they were bringing them down, and then maybe they're gonna haul them away eventually.
I can get, I can get further clarification from, oh, June is here. I can get further clarification from Judy if the board just wants to authorize it, subject to further clarification.
Yeah.
I find without too many to motion.
Yes, please.
I've moved to authorize Margaret to sign the invoice for the porta potties for some $200.
I'm gonna make Scott say it again, yeah. I second, it's all good.
All right, we'll take a vote. Keith, I.
Stone eye.
Hawkins eye.
Okay, and then June will just need a copy of the minutes when those are ready. Thank you. The next thing I have is the fifth update to our COVID standard operating procedures and reopening protocols. I just sent those out this afternoon. They now reflect information or directives from the latest state orders and advisories. So the biggest thing here is recognizing that town buildings are public locations under the face mask order, but they are also workplaces, so it was, I thought it was important to make it clear when face masks are required or when face coverings are required, which is almost always, and then those exceptions where face coverings are not required. So fifth updates are now done on those COVID protocols. The next thing I have, and probably the last thing that I'd like to discuss with the board, is a recap of the introductory meeting that Tim Wheeler, Chris and I had with Representatives of Metro West Collaborative Development on the Assabet Regional Housing Consortium. I circulated those notes, I don't know if you've all had a chance to read them, but essentially, Metro West Collaborative Development is the contractor under the intermunicipal agreement for the housing consortium, and they provide three different buckets of services to consortium members. And just to reiterate those members, it's Hudson, Bolton, Boxborough, Devens, Harvard, Lancaster, Littleton and Stowe currently, and Berlin might, I, I would like to try to move forward a petition from Berlin to join the consortium, since these towns are all pretty close to us, and we have a lot of issues in common. So anyway, the three buckets of services to the housing consortium's members are, one, affordable housing monitoring, and just in summary, the first year of membership, if Berlin is, is given permission to join the consortium, in the first year of membership, Metro West CD is going to be doing a lot of document assembly, so they're gonna be going to the registry and doing all kinds of document gathering on our developments and affordable units in town, which they do for every year. After the first year, the cost for these services might be, you know, is, it would be, it would be expected to be less, because they've done all the initial document gathering. The other, the next item is regional activities, and so Metro West CD offers marketing strategies, regional affordable housing strategies, and a number of other different programs to all of the, all of the member towns, and there is a baseline of 12 hours that each town allocates to those regional activities. So those are programs that are provided by Metro West CD throughout the year, and those programs are selected by the member communities. And then the final one is local support, so that is a general kind of catch-all bucket, where if something came up, for example, if a, an affordable unit came up for sale and we needed to intervene as quickly as possible to try to keep that affordable, that unit affordable, Metro West CD, we could use hours under this bucket for Metro West CD to work on behalf of the town to try to protect that unit. So all in all, based on kind of an initial calculation of, say, 40 hours in each of these buckets, we'd be looking at a first year cost of somewhere between $7,000 and $8,000. And that would be paid, we have a couple of options here in Berlin, it could be paid out of the affordable housing, the Highland Commons Affordable Housing Fund, or we now have CPA, and CPA funds can actually be appropriated annually toward membership in the housing consortium. So there are a couple of different options for the town to pay for this, this service that the town has indicated it needs. So what I'd like to do at this point, I'd like to come back to the board next, next week with a recommendation on a petition. Tim Wheeler is actually, is bringing these notes to the planning board for support, and I've asked the Housing Partnership if it would be possible for them to meet. If we all express our support, if all three of the bodies express their support, we could then submit a joint petition to the, to the housing, what is it called, consortium, to the housing consortium. Are there any questions at this point on the services?
So, Margaret, how realistic do you think that, you know, us getting in is, I mean, do you see any barriers that would prevent us from joining this consortium?
That's a good question, Peg, because right at the beginning of the meeting we had with Metro West CD, they were expressing a few concerns, not concerns, they, they were just kind of talking, talking aloud. They said, you know, how big does the consortium get before we start to become, before we start to lose effectiveness? But after we went through our entire conversation, I think both of them felt, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, I think both of them felt that Berlin would be a town that they could take on in the consortium, consortium and be able to provide effective services to.
Okay, thanks.
And then did I miss in my reading or see and not notice, what's the ballpark cost? Do we have, I mean, are we talking 3,000, 20,000, 150,000 a year?
Oh, a year, based on, based on kind of an estimated numbers they gave us, they gave us kind of ballpark hours for each of those buckets. I calculated right after the meeting, when I was talking to Chris and Tim, I calculated $6,900 in year one, it could be up to $8,000.
Right, but it gives me the right ballpark, you know, we're not talking about a $50,000, we're also not talking $500, so.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we'll put this on the agenda for, is it 11:16?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you. If anybody has any questions before, then just let me know.
Okay.
And I'm all set with my report, thank you.
Okay.
That's it?
Well, I have more, but I mean, I'm trying to just pull out highlights to keep the meeting moving, was there anything else I could pull out?
You know, there's always stuff that I want to talk about, but no, nothing that's like causing me to have angina, so I'm good.
Okay, my, my report is available online.
Okay, then we will move on to old business and authorization to release the all alcohol package store license to Highland Commons. Do you want to speak to this, Margaret?
Sure, so last, on November 5th, last Thursday, our building commissioner did an inspection at the liquor store and issued a temporary occupancy permit. I wasn't 100% comfortable with issuing the alcohol license in response to a temporary occupancy permit being issued. Um, so included the board on an email to the, um, to the manager explaining that Richard, our building commissioner, will be back there tomorrow. And he does expect that their work will be complete. So, um, once that inspection, um, uh, does prove that the work is complete, Richard can then, uh, issue a, a permanent occupancy permit. Um, and we could issue the license because they have met the other requirements. So my, um, my request to the board is to authorize me to issue, um, the alcohol license upon proof of the occupancy permit being issued.
So moved.
And seconded.
All right. No more questions, comments? We're good?
No, sounds great.
When would they be open, Margaret? If we gave, if everything goes well tomorrow and you gave them the license?
They're trying really hard to be open by Thanksgiving.
Really?
They're trying really hard to be, yeah, so I, I don't know for sure, but they're trying to move, but
Okay.
They need their license.
Right.
Okay, then let's take a vote. Um, Keith, I.
Stone eye.
Hawkins eye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, we are going to move on to the notice of the revised community garden rules and regulations. And do you want to speak to this too, Margaret?
Okay. Okay. Um, the ad commission last updated their rules and regulations in 2017. Um, these changes in this particular version, uh, do not affect the cost that is being asked for, um, uh, asked of gardeners to, um, reserve their plots. And it's not asking for any, um, changes that would have impacts on the leased land. So this is just to provide notice to the board um, that the ad commission is looking to, um, ask gardeners to include their donations with their applications this year to cover the cost of garden expenses. Had they asked for a different fee schedule, the board would have to have approved this. This is really just the timing of when, uh, gardeners will send in their donations. So this is notice to the board of that.
Okay, so this, it's not really necessary for us to, uh, take a vote on this.
Correct.
That is correct.
Okay. All right.
Looked nice. It's nice to think that we might be thinking about planting seasons. That's just, you know, it's 70 degrees outside, but we're thinking of that just planting.
It is nice. Um, I will ask the ad commission to provide a final copy of these rules and regs to the board for a file, for your file.
Okay.
All right, and we're going to review the draft cover letter, uh, special legislation for the Berlin Fire EMS chief.
This is very, very common special legislation that's run through the legislature, the, the legislature. The difference here, of course, is that it's going to be done through, um, the home rule amendment process. So, um, this is what I've drafted here, the whereas's and the now therefor's. That's just extra stuff that can be included on the petition, cover letter itself. Um, the act is very standard language, um, for a person in the fire service, um, who is at retirement age. Um, so what I'd like to do, uh, for next week is have this ready to present to the board, um, for the board to, um, to actually authorize sending this in, uh, to petition the governor for the special legislation.
What needs to change from this week to next week, or why are we not allowed to just vote on it today?
Oh, I guess you, wow, I.
I mean, we were ready to put it on.
We're all about getting things done here.
I appreciate that. I usually introduce things at one.
Right.
But if, if more, if you're ready to move this along, I can work on it. That's.
Standard language, that's something we've been trying, we've been pushing for, for a while. Uh, it, it doesn't guarantee that he stays because he could decide to still leave. It just gives us those options. It uses the age that we talked about when it was going to be a town warrant article. Uh, I'm all in favor. I, I would gladly, uh, move to approve this, uh, the home rule, uh, uh, presentation, uh, so that you can get it going and we can potentially have it clear all its hurdles by the time the day gets here.
Okay.
All right.
Seconded.
And, um, before we take a vote, I just had one question, Margaret. Um, I believe there was a sentence somewhere up the top about it being a fire chief. Should it be fire EMS chief?
The EMS chief doesn't have the restrictions under statute. That's why we're only referring to fire chief.
That's what I wondered. Yep. Okay. Um, all right then, so, uh, we can take a vote. Um, Keith, I.
Stone eye.
Hawkins eye.
Well, this is very exciting. Thank you.
Well, we got to keep chief in place for as long as we can, so.
That's right. Get it moving.
I had a very non-productive day at work, so I'm trying to make up for it, but being very productive here. I feel like I've done something today.
Let's keep it going.
Uh, all right. Well, that's done. Um, so is there potential agenda items for our December 10th coffee talk? Any ideas?
Budget?
Yeah, budget and finances could be nice to, to, I don't know how you have the conversation because Zoom conversations, this has proven difficult to get conversations going.
Yeah.
On the Zoom version of these, but I, I always interested where people think we should be spending more money, where people think we should be spending less money. Uh, because I, I know that even when I was on FinCon, you know, you, people are like, you know, we, taxes are too high. I'm like, well, what would you like to reduce in town services? And like, oh no, but I want the library to be open twice as many hours and the transfer station should be six days a week. And well, that, that takes money, so.
Right.
Um, I mean, is there anything that we, I know that we're delaying, um, town meeting. Uh, so that might come up or any of the, the items that were contained in there, you know, the money for the tree, for the trees, uh, the money for fixing the stuff up on the roof. I mean, those are probably some of the bigger ones that we might want to talk about and tell people if we have a Plan B, a Plan C.
Yeah. I don't know. We don't have, I was going to say bring out, bring on any new employees, but there aren't any really.
There are pets and ability there.
That we haven't already had on.
The board will be, um, well, um, they'll be, uh, the police department has been doing their screening, um, for, um, to fill the vacancy in the full-time officer position. Um, it is possible that next week, um, she may be introduced to the board at your meeting with my, uh, notice of intent to appoint. So I would just like the board to meet, to meet this, this person before.
Yeah.
He's appointed.
What about, I was thinking what would, might be nice too, is to have, um, the new employees from, uh, Highway come, maybe next time, next time Highway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the CBA committee would be, is relatively new and off the ground and, and, uh, so talk a little bit about the Community Preservation Act and what the money can go for and not go for and the process.
They will have had their training by then, yeah.
Well, this is some good ideas.
Yeah.
All right.
Got a good start for today.
Yeah, that's good. Really good, and that could take some time.
Will there be any, uh, Margaret, will there be any updates either on the library or anything on any of the grants that we've all applied for? I can tell you that, uh, I refuse to go to the general store anymore because, uh, every time I go, I get attacked, uh, about the whole shared streets and why are we doing it? Was there a public hearing and, you know, we shouldn't do it, we should do it. So that's probably a good opportunity to maybe lead that off as to here it is, why it is, you know, is it permanent? Is it not permanent?
Yeah, that's, that's great because it is a pilot and that will be a full month, um, that had been, um, out there. So we can do that too.
Get some feedback.
Yep.
Okay.
Right. That demo is the feedback.
Yeah. And then I don't know, Margaret, I know in your town report, um, way, way down the bottom, you would talk to something about, uh, uh, like the holiday in Berlin or whatever. So I don't know if that's an opportunity. Bring that up.
That would be a really good one too. Now, that's going to be Berlin seniors, but I could certainly ask Judy. Um, you know, they're going to have things in place by then. I can ask Judy if she'd like to speak to that. That's a community event.
Okay.
Wow.
There we go.
Agenda.
There you go. Round set.
All right. Uh, shall we move on to, uh, more questions and comments?
Uh, did you miss the FinCon memo and TA draft memo?
Oh, I guess I did. I'm sorry. Yep. FinCon memo and TA draft memo.
Okay, so the board received copies of the finance committee's, uh, memo that was voted on October 14th. Um, copy of my memo, and I also do a checklist, uh, for departments, um, in preparation of their budget submissions. And also the accountant's, uh, memo, um, and there is some duplication, duplications between all three of these memos. Uh, the common theme, of course, this year is, uh, COVID and the fiscal uncertainty surrounding, uh, COVID. Um, we, uh, the finance committee, uh, cautions in their, in their memo, um, that, um, there is, uh, fiscal uncertainty, um, and that it is, uh, affecting the town's finances, both from a diminished revenue perspective and, um, necessary budget cuts. So we'll almost certainly flow from that. My memo echoes what the finance committee's memo, um, says. Um, and it also stresses that we're not just looking at this in a short-term FY 2010, uh, 2022 perspective. Um, this is something that is likely to carry over for a while, um, based on what we've already seen here with the decreased, uh, meals and rooms taxes, with a couple of our large commercial, uh, businesses filing for bankruptcy. Uh, we have an ongoing inability, uh, to fill vacant storefronts. You can see that at Highland Commons and Solomon Pond Mall. Um, and we don't even have an FY 21 state budget finalized yet. It's just making its way to the House. So it's going to be several months. Um, by the time the FY 21 budget is, um, is actually approved, we're already going to be getting the governor's proposed FY 2022 budget. So I have, I have advised in my memo that all departments, boards and committees should come in at level funding, um, their bottom line budgets at the June 2020, uh, June 22nd annual town meeting amounts. So those were the amounts that had already been reduced from the requested amounts, and we had pared them down, uh, because of COVID. Um, so departments are highly encouraged to look, and, and the finance committee's memo says this, um, as well. Departments are going to be highly encouraged to look, uh, to allocate funds, um, intra-departmentally. So if they're saving money in one subcategory in their expenses, look to see if they can move that around before, um, requesting increases. I also ask in my memo that if there are any extraordinary needs, um, that departments, um, expect to present, do not present those in the, uh, budget request itself. Prepare a separate narrative and separate itemized detail that would support the need, uh, for those extraordinary, uh, costs and provide, um, provide itemized costs for that as well. And, um, uh, payroll lines should also be level funded until such time as the personnel committee makes a recommendation to the board. That's expected on November 23rd on, uh, COLAs and on market wage adjustments based on the, the HR study. Um, and then finally, last year we found, and I, the town is, um, Scott, you're probably really familiar with this. Chris, you too, haven't been on the finance committee. What we found is there wasn't really good consistency with the budget request submission worksheets. Some departments tended to use their own, and it made it a little, no, made it much more challenging to try to sort through the information. So departments, boards and committees are being asked this year to be consistent and submit all of their budget requests on the prescribed forms, on the forms that June has provided.
So Margaret, can you just tell them no? I mean, if it, can you just tell them no? If it comes in on the wrong form, can you just give it back to them and say?
We, we did, and we gave several back last year, but too many times. And so this time, yep, so, yep, so this time we are, um, they are going to be scrubbed. They're going to go to June 1st for an initial review of, um, of, uh, completeness and correctness. Um, and if they need to be sent back, they'll be sent back. They'll be sent over to me, then I'll plug numbers into the working budget spreadsheet and send those, um, send the budget request to the board and the finance committee. So we've tried to get up, we've, we tried to put a system in place here, um, that's going to hopefully make it easier for everyone.
Can you play a little hardball with them and just say, you know, look, here's the process, here's the form. You know what? You don't get it in, you can't follow directions, therefore you don't have a budget. Sorry. I mean, I know it sounds harsh and I know.
Yeah.
It is. Excellent. But at the same time, it's like, come on, there is nobody on any of the committees that this is their first rodeo, their first budget with anybody, and honestly, they know better.
My hope is that, um, well, we're going to be taping both of the budget kickoff meetings, the one tomorrow at 10 o'clock and the one Thursday at seven. Um, my hope is that we can be clear enough so that they understand what is going to be required, um, and that they will comply. And if not, Peg, yeah, they get sent back.
It's been my experience, the department has actually do a very decent job.
I think, I think for the most part.
Uh, our, our budget in town mostly goes up because healthcare costs go up, Western Region Retirement goes up, and the, the schools go up. And, and that those are really responsible for like 80 or 90% of the increases. Uh, because, you know, the, the library could have like a 10% increase in their expenditures, and it's still only like a five or $600 increase or a thousand or two. The six more kids go to Assabette, and our allocation goes from, you know, 5% to 8%, and that's another $40,000.
You know? Agree.
Impossible to know right now what, uh, what the effect of COVID is going to have on the school budget. So that's going to be very, very interesting. Yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, we, we will, we will do our best to, to stay on track. Um, we, we do have to be strict because, um, we have to be. We just have to be.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. They, they were well written. I liked them.
Thank you.
Okay, um, moving on to board questions and comments. I actually.
Not me today.
Got you.
I, I, I already did my rants. I'm not allowed to do my rants today, so.
All right, well, there was a, some emails going back and forth between, um, Margaret and Mary and I about, um, 2021 and 22 license renewals. And a question as to whether we should reduce or drop the fees or just leave it alone. Um, and so I just wanted to, um, get some feedback from you, but I also wanted to share my opinion. Um, I, I mean, some of the, some of the communities that are waiving the fees are, uh, larger communities. Um, and I think the smaller communities are dependent on the money that comes in from the fees. And I think our, and small communities are having just as tough a time as businesses financially. So I personally would not be in favor of waiving the fees. Um, but I wanted to make sure, um, to get some feedback from both of you.
Well, I mean, Chris, before, um, feedback for anybody watching this on, on playback, could you expand a little bit more on the fees that you're talking about or what you're looking at for them?
Oh, I'm sorry, like, like liquor license fees. Um, and I think it was, I think there was an estimation of it could, if we waived the fees, would, wouldn't it be something like $9,000?
Oh, I wish I had the total fee revenue.
I, I think. I think Mary, hadn't you estimated it at something like $9,000?
Um, Littleton asked about this, and it wasn't for package stores, it was for restaurants. And so, yeah, their year, they were closed and unable to serve people. It would be $9,000 if you were to wipe away a liquor license fee for your restaurants. It's the equal amount for your package stores because you have six, six of restaurants and package stores. But yeah, of the, of the communities that she listed off when she asked me today, they were mostly larger cities.
Yeah, and.
So we have six restaurants that sell alcohol in the town, correct?
Yeah.
And I, I, you know, as, I guess it's a good time for me to bring this up after our. And I, I, you know, as, I guess it's a good time for me to bring this up after our talking about the FinCom and the TA draft memos and how we're basically trying to look at the fact that with COVID, things could be very tight for the next few years. I think I would also, if, if someone claimed it was a hardship for them, then I think we should consider it. But at this point, you know, we haven't heard from anyone.
And Mary has collected a lot of money already for the renewals.
So, you know, I, I, I just think that maybe it'd be in the best interest of the town at this point, just to leave it alone. But I wanted to make sure that we heard from both you two, Peg and Scott.
I, I'm fine with leaving it alone. I think that each business, of course, has had our own sort of pluses and minuses out of the whole thing. But, but I, I haven't heard someone come forward saying it, it has, that this is a, a big burden. And, and some of the, even the restaurants are large chains that are still doing kind of, okay, no, it's doing great. But, but I, I'm fine with leaving them alone.
Okay.
Agreed, I mean, I would just hate to say either waive them all or, you know, because I wouldn't, not that it would ever happen, but I would hate to say, for someone to say, oh, I can't pay, and we go, okay, and then someone goes, oh, well, I can't pay either, oh, okay, well, I can't pay either, oh, okay, and all of a sudden, no one can pay. So I think we just leave, leave as is until something comes up and then we'll get together and deliberate and have a chat.
And it's worth keeping in mind too, that the liquor licenses have a real monetary value to them, and they want to hold on to them.
I, I think if, if there was a business that was in horrible straits for some reason and wanted to work on a relatively short payment terms, like, you know, three payments every other month, so it's paid off in the first six months of the year, I'd, I'd probably be more open to that.
Yeah, I mean, you could come up with other, you know, different, different options.
Right, but the liquor licenses, liquor is where these restaurants make a chunk of their money.
Right.
That's right.
Okay, well, thank you. Can I, I can, can I ask one more?
Of course.
You're cutting into my time, Christine.
Okay, I'll hurry. I just had a question for Margaret about the joint FinCom and Select Board meeting on 11/18. Is that still a go?
I do have to check with the Senes on that to see if they intend to come to that meeting. I have not heard one way or another from them yet, but I, I'll let you know.
Okay, I, I figured that there may have been some thought to postponing it.
But while you, while you mention that, if you, if I could just have one moment. So the Senes have been fairly clear that they are not going to pay the $100,000 that is due on November 1st. I would like to know if the board has, if there is any appetite at all to ask if they, or to present an opportunity for them to negotiate a payment plan for this first year's payment. And if so, we could maybe present something to them, give them till December, the end of December, to express a willingness to negotiate a, a payment plan. I mean, they are obligated to pay it under the development agreement, but there is nothing that says we can't work with them to, you know, we know they're hurting, we all, we all are, town is too. So maybe we can work with them on something to, to get that payment.
That was due November 1st, right?
It was due November 1st.
November 1st.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Margaret, what are the legal ramifications, even if we go back to them and say, hey, you know, we'll put you on a payment plan, and they say, no, so.
I, as much as I, 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 I feel that we should make an effort first, I, I don't want to get into breach of contract, you know, or anything like that. I just think that we need to try to, to work with them and.
Yeah.
My preference, yeah, so, so anyway, Peg, that's the, that's the short answer. I think that you're, you're looking at a contract issue and not meeting contract terms, so, but we, I, I feel like maybe we should try.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think, I think it's a good idea to make a good faith effort. And then they will too, is what I'm assuming.
Okay.
I'll bring that back next week for board approval.
Okay. Questions and comments?
Well, Margaret stole one of my two, so, you know. No, and the only other one that I was going to say, if anybody picked up the item this past weekend, our article was in about what's Berlin been up to, so. I thought that was kind of, yeah, I thought that was kind of cool. Jan reached out and she's like, I need a byline, and of course Peg responded with, what's a byline, so.
What'd you say, things are happening in Berlin?
So, well, that's what I thought, and she went, no, silly, who's authoring it? And I'm like, oh, I'm like all of us, I said, put us all on, so we all have. I know, so all four of us.
Published artists, yeah.
Published boom chakalaka, thank you. So, yeah, that one in there, so next month I'll be going through and pilfering other stuff, I'll be starting my list for, you know, what's Berlin up to, so I might just steal stuff right out of our coffee talk.
All right.
That's all I got.
Hey. Well, that's good, so we do have need for a short executive session. We'll enter executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, exemption number three, which is fire an EMS employee intent to organize, and exemption number seven, to review and approve three sets of executive session meeting minutes. And we will not be returning to, we will be returning to open session, but only to adjourn. So do I, do we need to take a vote here? Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
Hawkins, aye.